Okay, I think it's two o'clock now officially. And so I'm going to call this meeting to order. We do have a quorum present. This is a special call meeting of the Board of Trustees of Weatherford College, which is being held on Tuesday, which is today, Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. It's 2:00 PM and we're in the Aline Strain Community Room of the Doss Student Center, which is located at 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, to consider and act on the posted agenda, the one that is before me. First item on the agenda is called to order, which I have done. And we will now ask Mr. Baker to give the invocation.
Yes, sir, please bow with me. Lord, we are thankful to you for the start of a new semester, start of a new year, and lots of new beginnings. Thank you for keeping our faculty, staff, and students safe. Thank you for our board members. Thank you for our new board members. And, Lord, we thank you for the deliberations of our board. Please be with them as they continue to help lead this college. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Let's stand and I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, be seated. Item number two on the agenda is open forum for individuals not on the agenda. And Ms. Worley, are we filling out another one back there?
They're all for dead.
Okay, all right. So what I'll do is I will take these in the order that they're on my, on the table here. And I think there are a couple also that want to be noted as wanting to speak, but not able to be present. So the first thing I want to make sure you understand is the notice says that you understand that you're limited to your remarks of five or fewer minutes and that the board will not take any action on this item unless it's on today's agenda. I think that's well understood. And that furthermore, that I, as the board chair, can direct the college president to place matters on a future agenda if the board action on those items are contemplated. We'll ask Mr. Josh, is it Merrill?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Merrill, would you come up forward and...
Well, I wanted to hear the rest of the remarks before I had anything to say. I just wanted to listen to what was going on first. So I don't, I'm not prepared to speak until I listen first. So I'll just wave my right.
No, I can move you to the back. I don't...
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I'd be glad to do that.
That'd be fine. I want to listen before I speak, so.
No, that's fine. Thank you for telling me that. You're, you're going to be given your opportunity to speak, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Is there any chance I could speak in his place? I didn't get, I didn't know I was supposed to sign in.
I would ordinarily like to do that, but I don't think I'm permitted by the rules that we're under. It's not rules...
There's nothing in the meeting notice about it.
It's not something I can discuss, but I regret that, but I don't think I can add you at this time. If I felt like I could, I would. We'll go to David A. Larson, Sr. If you're here, sir, and you'd like to approach, please come forward. Welcome. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, it's good to be here. Can I take this thing off so you can be sure to hear me?
Yes, sir, please do.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Yes, sir.
And I just want to mention that one of the reasons I'm opposed to this, first and foremost, is that COVID-19's caused a lot of people a lot of hardships. And I'm not sure that we need to add to hardships with any kind of tax increase from anywhere, to be quite honest with you. Also, it's my understanding from a report that came out for Parker County back in 2010 that Parker County is going to have a 66% growth over the next, like, 15 years, of which now we're well into that. So to me, that means you've got a lot of extra homes and apartments where tax revenue's coming in. So I'm not sure anybody has necessarily studied that because I couldn't find anything on it to say that you study that, to show that. But I think it's important that we have an idea of how much extra that's brought in and how it's been used. I would ask a question that I hope you'll address is what have you looked at for finding savings? I've been involved in several situations during my career where we had to find a way with budget cuts to do things with budget cuts. I don't know if you've looked at that because I couldn't find anything on that either. I got an interesting graph here that was provided that talked about us and the tax rate in other areas in the state. Well, that's nice. I don't live in other areas of the state. I live in Parker County. To me, that really, in many ways, doesn't apply. It's like I hear, I've heard people many times saying they pay $5, $6 a gallon for gas in Europe, why don't we increase our gas prices? I don't live in Europe. I live here. I don't want my gas prices to go up because of a reason like that, just like I don't because other places may be charging more for taxes. My understanding is the colleges from the government did get a $2 million grant. I saw that in some information that was sent to me. Don't know the accuracy of it. I'm taking it from the people that sent it as being accurate. So I'm not sure what that might have been used for and why additional funds are needed now, if that's true. And I'd like to know if that is true. I also understand the tuition has gone up for students. If that's true, then why do we still need to have a tax increase? So to me, there's just a lot of information that hasn't yet been provided, at least to me, if you will, the customer and the person that has to have part of the burden, to know what should be taking place here and what should be voted on. And then the last thing I'll ask is, when will the vote take place? Is it today? Is it another day? I haven't been able to find that for sure either. With that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Appreciate your comments. And now we'll go to John Chisholm.
Can I ask a question real quick for a little clarity? Might help me understand where we're at. This is a little under, and y'all have to understand, these Robert's Rules won't let us have conversation back and forth with y'all. It's, it's not our rules, but it's a rule from the rules of board meetings. So I'll try to ask Dr. Cantrell a few questions to help get some clarity for me, maybe, maybe for y'all too, okay? So, so we're talking about an under one cent is what it's amounted to, correct, Dr. Cantrell? And if I may, how many, how many junior colleges are in the state of Texas?
Fifty.
So there's 50 junior colleges in the state?
Yes.
And out of those 50, where do we rank with our budget?
We're ranked 10th lowest.
So the 10th lowest out of 50, okay. And we're charging this year 12 cents and some change. What would be the, the average of those 50 schools?
The average last year...
Yes, ma'am.
Was 18.661 or 18.66...
So 18.6 would be the state average. And we're at what?
We, last year, were at 11,495. We're proposing to go to 12.536.
Gotcha, gotcha. So this is going to amount to 40 bucks a year, a little over $3 a month, or...
That's on the average household in Parker County.
On the average house.
I think what will be in the ordinance if passed would be, ask you to place in the ordinance on a $100,000 house, what it would be over last year, and it's $10.56 when you look at that.
For the year?
The way they...
For the month or the year, Doctor?
For the year.
For the whole year, $10.
But that's a $100,000 tax value.
Yes, ma'am.
But the $242,000, I believe, is the average house.
Now, now, we're building this big building. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And, and in this big building, the actual Workforce Commission has kind of said that they'd help with the build-out and actually rent it back from us at a profit to us to help educate people who may have lost their job in this COVID. Is that, is that close?
Yes, they will be leasing from us. I believe the lease is approximately, I don't know that we finalized it totally, but approximately $200,000 a year. And they will be working with unemployed people in the community, trying to fit those people to work. We work with them all the time in putting them in classes here. So it's very convenient and very good for their, them to be able to come to basically a one-stop shop to get help.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, okay, thank you. I needed to know that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that all?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Chisholm.
Yes, my name's John Chisholm. We moved to Parker County in 1991 from Dallas County to get away from high taxes. Didn't realize we were moving to one of the highest tax counties in the state at that time. I want to speak against this tax increase because of the fact that we have so many people who have lost income or had their incomes frozen due to the COVID virus. They're having to operate in budgets that they're cutting their own selves in order to maintain their life, to maintain a livelihood and roofs over their heads. My wife is a Realtor in this town. I'm a retired firefighter. When we started running numbers, from January 1st through July 1st, the average home sale price in Parker County is $335,000. Average new construction is about $397. So in the first six months, $1.6 billion was added to the tax rolls for Parker County. At the current tax rate, that equates to y'all's pocketbook increasing Under the new tax rate, you're going to bring in $203 million and change. This is outrageous numbers, especially in that variation, that variance between the two numbers. When I look at North Central Texas as a whole, the counties that encompass the metroplex, we are the third highest value properties in North Texas. The only two that value higher than us are Collin and Denton County. We're ahead of Dallas, Carrant, Wise, Hood, Johnson, Kaufman, Palatito, and Ellis Counties. That doesn't even include the commercial property values that are added. At the current time, there are 73 properties listed for sale in commercial, and their value, average value is $9,307,1766. There were actually 84 properties listed, but the others did not have their prices shown. You'd have to call the agents to get the actual prices. I vote, or I'm praying that y'all vote this down and maintain the tax rate at what it is. Your, your numbers are down for students attending college here right now because of the COVID, is my understanding. Y'all are doing virtual in addition to onsite. And the cost of doing this shouldn't be any more than what it has been in the past. With so many other people who are struggling to make ends meet, I think y'all should show the forbearance to do, to do the same. Otherwise, the percentage of tax rate that y'all proposed is a slap in the face to the taxpayers based upon the law that was passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chisholm. Appreciate your comments. We'll now move to, is it Jed Brown? Mr. Brown, you're, you're up. Thank you for coming today.
I would also like to ask some questions for clarity as decided by Mr. Dixon. Is that correct? It is my understanding that you could actually use more funds that are being requested in this new increase. Is that correct?
We're not in a, we can't answer questions in this. This is your opportunity to make your comments.
Well, I'll just pose them as rhetorical.
I'm sorry?
I'll just pose them as rhetorical questions.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you, sir, okay.
So I would assume that be, with the information that was provided by Mr. Dixon, that what you're actually trying to do is provide more good in the community, create more jobs, which jobs and wealth are not actually created by no government spending, which is what this is. It's a taxation that's being, then being redistributed to other people, but they're actually created through investments. And this is not an investment, it's a confiscation of my wealth so that you can spend it in areas that you think it should be spent in. But it's my understanding that you could actually use more money than you're requesting from what you've, the information that you provided. If that is the case, then why not ask for a higher increase? Instead of a 7.99999% increase, why not make it over 8% and make it what you need it to be so that we can put it to a vote in the community? I would assume that you believe in voting, and if you actually need the funds and you think that the people of Weatherford would truly benefit from this, then why not let the people of Weatherford decide if they would like to go forward with this increase? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Next is Mr. Floyd Hendrick. Thank you, Mr. Hendrick. Appreciate you being here. Jonathan Horton. Mr. Horton?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Yes, sir. I'd like to say first that I'm an alumni of this institution. I was a part of Phi Theta Kappa, the Phi chapter here, back in 2012 and 2014. I want to say it was a great experience. And there were two things that this organization, this institution, taught me. And one of them was that you have to be a person of honor. You've got to be a person of integrity as well. And as an aspiring CPA, those are ethical values that I am supposed to hold to as well. And I feel like this institution, though my experience was great, has gone about this tax increase in a very underhanded way by raising it only to the point where the community does not have the right to vote on it. I believe that it's wrong. I believe that it's not ethical. I believe that there's no honor in it, and I believe there's no integrity in it. Now, you've talked about how you need funds to build a building, but, you know, you have other means of doing it. In a time of economic crisis, the time is not right to increase taxes, but rather keep them where they are. Allow people to build some savings. Allow people to actually recover from what's actually taking place. I know my dad can't afford it. My dad cannot afford any more tax increases. But the way things are going right now, no. Tax increase right now, even for this institution, and I'm excited about where this institution's going. I'm excited about the opportunity that it can provide for you programs. But right now is not the time to increase taxes. I urge you, and my prayer for you, is that God gives you guidance and revelation in this and that you come to the conclusion that a tax increase is not needed. I'm a CPA. I'm aspiring to be a CPA. I believe that there are certain ethical values that this board should adhere to. And one of them is you give the community a right to vote on this issue. It's important. It affects them. That's where the vote should come from. I thank you all for your time, and I pray that you come to the right decision.
Thank you. Caroline Tally?
Yes, sir.
You're up, please.
I have to videotape some, can I, what that gentleman's feet for me? I have to videotape this for Miss...
Ms. Tally, we, we can't do that. The rules don't permit it.
Okay, I'm going to read this for Mr. Bruce Melber. Good afternoon, and thank you very much for allowing the tax money on this important topic today. My name is Caroline Tally, and I'm speaking for Mr. Bruce Melber. And I am here as a resident and homeowner of Weatherford, representing myself, my wife, my neighbors, and Melissa Howman in opposition to your proposed tax rate increase. I am a software engineer, and I work, sorry, it's hard, oh, I can take this off, correct?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I work in travel industry for one of the world's largest global distribution suppliers. Virtually every airline in the world uses our system. If you book and travel chances, if you book air travel, chances are you're using our system. In March of this year, my employer announced to the employees that bookings were down approximately 90% due to COVID-19. They had no choice but to make significant cost reductions. My salary alone with thousands of other employees' salaries were cut 20% or more. 401K matching was also stopped. Early retirement was offered to many employees. We hope for the best, but in April, my employer announced forced furloughs in thousands of employees worldwide. I was also furloughed. I was on unemployment for two months. Fortunately, by the grace of God, I was called back to work in July. Sadly, thousands of my North Texas fellow employees were permanently laid off, and many are still laid off. The travel industry is still operating at a small fraction of pre-COVID-19 pandemic levels. No one in the industry has a crystal ball to say when demand will return. I have heard by years in travel, I have heard by years in travel will still be the fraction of the pre-COVID levels. This is why our proposed tax rate increase is so troubling to me. With this very uncertain economy, you want to raise our taxes. What a horrible, horrible time to do this, which I totally agree. I am not certain I will not furlough or lay off again. American Airlines recently announced furloughs for thousands of its employees, over 1,600 pilots, and over 8,000 flight attendants and others. Those furloughs affect my employer and consequently me. Many other industries such as hotels, restaurants, car rental agencies are also affected by decreased travel. These are tough times that we all are living in. And I urge you to cut spending rather than increasing taxes on Texans like myself and neighbors and who are suffering financially from the effects of this pandemic. I have also heard that you received a COVID-19 government assistance payment in the amount of $2 million. Now, you still want more money from the taxpayers and are requesting this rate increase at a time when the most taxpayers cannot attend this meeting and just under an amount required by the Texas law for voter approval. Unbelievable. Why now? Why at this extremely difficult time for taxpayers? I ask you, please, vote no on increasing the tax rate. And I agree. I have gone to help elderly people. I have brought food. I've taken them, told them where the food banks is. Our, I mean, we are, my husband works two jobs so we can keep our home. And my husband is a brilliant artist in designing land and everything. And it's just not right. It is our God-given birthright to own our property, and it is our God-given birthright not to have to be taxed out of our land. It's, it's not right. And you all wouldn't like it if it was happening to you, if you had a hard time making ends meet. So I ask you to dig deep down inside and ask the Holy Spirit to show you what is best for Parker County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tally. Mr. Merrill, you're up.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate the chance to come to this meeting. I want to say a few things. First of all, I take from Dr. Dixon's conversation here with Dr. Cantrell that you assume that this proposed increase is very reasonable. I mean, you cited all this statistics about how modest our payments were as opposed to the state average and so on and so forth, and that you assume that it's very modest and even in the interest of the community, I think that's been stated already. I think that was the whole point of your little conversation back and forth was to try to show that this is very modest, very reasonable, very good for the overall community. But if that is the case, then why are you afraid to put it to the vote of the people? If it is in fact in the interest of everybody in the community, then they should welcome this with open arms. But the very fact that you would raise it all the way to the limit without going over to the, to the amount where it has to be voted on indicates that you don't think that they would be in favor of that. I mean, that's what it looks like. If you really thought that everybody would be on board with this and that it's in their own interest, surely the people of Parker County are able to recognize what is in their interest and would vote for it. But the fact that you won't put it to the vote suggests that you don't actually agree with that. So I think it is unethical and underhanded, just like it's been stated again and again, and you should not do it. Second of all, I agree with the statements of all those who have spoken here today about the fact that COVID is a good reason. It's been damaging to everyone's economic livelihood and so on and so forth. And so I think that's a good reason. But in principle, if COVID had not happened, it is still not right to confiscate wealth without the consent of those for whom it is being taken. That's just not a good principle. We believe in the consent of the government. And you are confiscating my hard-earned money. You're taking money from the people who earned it and giving it to people who did not earn it. And that should not be done, just in principle. And third, I want to know, just in principle again, why is it that I have to sacrifice so that you can expand? Why is it that all of us who have homes and our own projects that we want to see accomplished, we want to see all of these things done in our own life, and yet we have to put our agenda on hold so that you can put your agenda forward? That's wrong. That's just wrong. And I think everyone can see it. And I agree, I mean, I realize y'all probably live in Parker County, and you're going to have your taxes go up and so on and so forth. But you're, you're deciding this. You're the ones who are in the position to make these decisions, and you're, you're deciding that for me. That's wrong. If you think it's okay to do, then put it to the vote. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. We also have two, I guess these are emails. I'm going to, I'm going to guess that these are emails. One is from the Boran Asher household, B-O-R-E-N Asher household. And what they say in effect is that they disagree with the increase and want to voice their, their feelings about that, although they can't be here. And then also Brandy Qualls. She feels the same way. Basically, she says she's 100% opposed to this increase. After doing my homework, I feel this increase is not justified, especially looking at projections. Thank you for your time and consideration. So I wanted to put those in the record. These will be maintained, and we appreciate all the comments that were made. All right. We will now move to agenda item number three. Consideration, possible action, adoption of the 2020-21 budget, salary structure, schedules, and approval of contractual employees. And we would ask Dr. Cantrell to speak to this matter.
This time, we're presenting the 2021 proposed budget to the board at a total revenue and expenditure total of $63,492,87. There's been, been no changes made to the revenues and expenditures since the workshop at the early August. We've attached for your review a copy of the salary structure for the 2021 year for faculty, administrative professional staff, and classified staff, along with a complete listing of contractual employees. This time, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you all would like to, if I may, respond to.
Any comments or questions by the board?
Very clear to me. You okay, Trina?
Is there a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the proposed 2020-21 budget in the amount of $63,492,87? The salary structure schedules for, schedules for the 2021 fiscal year and the employment of the contractual employees included in the proposed 2020 budget? Is there such a motion?
I shall move.
There's second. Motion second. Motion second, all in favor, raise your hand. That's unanimous. Thank you. Moving to Agenda Item Number Four. Consideration, Possible Action, Adoption of the 2020 Adverum Tax Rate, which includes the maintenance and operations amount and the debt service. And I thought you wanted to make a comment about that before we...
I'd just like to say why I'm supporting this. I started to work here in 1983. There were approximately 1,600 students at that time. Today, there are almost 6,000. In 1983, Weatherford College had about 100 full-time employees. Today, we have almost 300. Out of the 50 community colleges in Texas, WC ranks 37th in faculty salaries. That means there's only 13 community colleges that have lower salaries than Weatherford College. When I retired at the end of 2016, I decided to run for a place on this Board. One of my priorities was to get faculty and staff salaries up to the state average. We're about to start construction on the Workforce and Technology Building on our campus. This building will house Weatherford College programs as well as workforce education programs that will train community members in skills that will allow them to get jobs and provide for their families. After its completion, it will take funds to maintain the building, estimated at around $250,000 a year. While other community colleges are seeing declining enrollment, Weatherford College is growing. It takes funds to make that growth happen. We can't tell students who want to attend, "We're sorry, we can't afford to give you the education you deserve." We have an obligation to provide the best education we can to the students who trust us to attend here. In 1983, when I started, the state appropriations made up 66.17% of the yearly revenue. Today, our state appropriations make up 14.17% of the total revenue. That's a big difference. When I started here in 1983, the tax rate was .0515. Today, the tax rate is .1253. 20 years ago, the tax rate was .1289. That was higher than what we're proposing today. And as we've already talked about, the state average is .187, which were so much lower than the state average. Weatherford College has the 10th lowest tax rate. That means nine, only nine, out of the 50 community colleges have a lower tax rate than us, while we are one of the few community colleges experiencing continual growth. Weatherford College is your community college, and we value and appreciate your support.
Anything else? Anyone else? Okay. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees adopt the 2020 Adverum Tax Rate of 0.12535816, which is 0.12078 maintenance and operations plus 0.00457816 for debt service by adopting the tax ordinance fixing and levying ad valorem taxes for the Weatherford College District for the year 2020 and for each year thereafter until otherwise provided. So this would be the proposed motion. Move that the property tax rate be increased by adoption of the tax rate of 0.12535816, which is 0.1207878 for maintenance and operations plus 0.00457816 for debt service, which is effectively a 7.99% increase in the tax rate, percentage by which the proposed tax rate exceeds the known new revenue tax rate. Is there such a motion?
I shall move.
Ms. Cody moves second?
Second.
Moving second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand. Passage unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, time for a recall.
Thank you for being here.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for being here, as they said. Number five on the agenda, Consideration and Possible Action of RFP-02-21 Weatherford College Remote Proctoring Solution. Dr. Cantrell.
We are seeking procurement, implementation, training, and ongoing support for a remote proctoring system solution as a cloud subscription service that will increase efficiency and integrity of testing in the Canvas online classroom by allowing students to take proctored exams in remote setting. A request for these proposals went out on August 6th and will return on August the 25th. There were several others that I believe were on the committee that worked to look for the best system capability and functionality, which was ranked 60% of value to us. Total cost of ownership, including first three years of maintenance, 30%. And conversion, implementation, and training, 10%. Based upon the evaluation of the criteria ranking and the justification submitted by the selection committee, the members considered Honor Lock Inc. to represent the best value on remote proctoring solution for Weatherford College due to their superior functionality as well as the unique feature for seek and destroy technology. I believe it's $119,000 for three years. Those bids were listed on the following page. It was not the low bid, but the highest ranking for the criteria. Recommendation is that the Board of Trustees award this proposal to the vendor as presented, along with authorization to enter into a contract with the vendor subject to a general counsel review and approval.
Dr. Cantrell, is that Honor Lock?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any questions or comments by the Board? Anyone? Thank you. Do you have something to say?
It's just something that we need in this world with all the virtual stuff going on.
Absolutely. And it was a real necessity with the move to online for the spring. Mike Indy could probably speak to it. I think he was one that called me and requested we didn't really plan to do this this time, but it was just with starting the new year and moving forward, it was just almost essential.
It'll protect the integrity of our whole testing system.
All right. Any other comments? All right. Is there a motion that the Board of Trustees award proposal to Honor Lock Inc., the vendor as presented, along with authorization to enter into a contract with that vendor subject to general counsel review and approval? Is there such a motion?
I shall move.
Second on that?
I'll second it.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we're going to close the open session briefly. It shouldn't be very long because we're going into a closed session. And in that closed session, as posted, we will deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee in accordance with Government Code 551.074. With that, we will wait about two, three minutes, let everybody kind of get settled, and then we'll go into our closed session and try to take care of that and be back in open session as soon as we finish. Thank you very much. Okay, it's now about five minutes till three. And so we will call the open session back into order. And we will take up the agenda with number seven on the agenda, which is Consideration, Possible Action, Personnel Matters. There are no action items that need to be dealt with under number seven, so we'll move to item number eight, Consideration, Possible Action, Appointment to Place Five, Weatherford College. And before I call for the motion, that would be the place Mrs. Carter, Ms. Elaine Carter, resigning has left open. So with that in mind, I would entertain a motion for the appointment to Place Five, College Trustee Board to fill the position held by Elaine Carter due to her resignation. Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Dan Carney to fill that position?
I'll appoint. I'll make a motion.
Is there a second, a motion and second? That's been done. So all in favor, say aye. Raise your hand.
Raise your hand.
All right, that's unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Carney.
Thank you very much.
We're about to swear in here in a minute.
Well, maybe this...
If the judge has, the judge is here so we can... There he is back there. All right, so we will go to number nine on the agenda, Consideration, Possible Action, Appointment to Place Four, Weatherford College Board of Trustees. And as you know, Appointment to Place Four deals with the position that was held by Roger Gizard, that due to his untimely death, we've lost him. So we now have the opportunity to appoint the replacement. So the... The motion would be Appointment to Place Four, Weatherford College Trustee Board to fill the position held by Roger Gizard due to his death. A motion to appoint Mr. Dave Calley to fill that position. Is there such a motion?
I shall move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hands. That's unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Calley. All right. Now we'll move to number 10 on the agenda, Swearing In of Newly Appointed Board Members. And with that in mind, I'd ask, we've asked Judge Quisenberry to come and administer the oath. I'd ask both of the new Board members to come forward and we'll ask the judge to administer... Judge, would you rather do them individually or jointly?
I'll do them individually.
All right, so let's get...
You know, I don't hear very well and I want to be...
Let's get Mr. Carney to come forward and if you can, up here in front of the camera.
Mr. President, may I have my granddaughter, friends from Weatherford College join me?
Yes, you can. Congratulations, Mr. Carney.
She will also be holding a copy of the 1943 Weatherford College Oakleaf, which belonged to my mom.
Did you hear that one, yours?
It was about that long ago.
I'll bow before you, Dan.
Let me clarify. Mr. Carney will be for which place?
Five.
Place five.
Place five, okay. All right. Are you ready to accept the oath?
I am, Your Honor.
All right, if you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Dan Carney...
I, Dan Carney.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of trustee, place four...
Of trustee, place five.
Place five. Weatherford College...
Weatherford College.
Weatherford Junior College District, Parker County...
Weatherford Junior College District, Parker County.
And will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Constitution and laws of the United States...
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help you God.
So help me God.
You are sworn in.
Thank you. Mr. Carney, don't leave me hanging.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Real briefly, thank you for this opportunity. First things first, I thank God for my continued help and my, this opportunity to be of service. I thank my beautiful life of 44 years sitting back there for standing by me all these times. In 1943, during World War II, my dad was a private in the U.S. Army Air Corps, serving his country. At the same time, my then-19-year-old mother was serving this college on the student council as a student council representative. All three of their sons attended Weatherford College. 30 years after she served, I got my very first degree from Weatherford College. Their grandson, Paul Carney, attended this college. Their granddaughter, my daughter, Stacy Carney, got her degree from this college in 2009. I'm very, very happy to say that my granddaughter is now a freshman here, daughter of Shannon and Dr. Craig Swett. I'm so proud that she's here and I thank you for the opportunity to offer me this position. I'm very grateful.
Thank you, Dan.
We are grateful.
Ms. Tally, please come forward and be sworn in.
Yes, sir.
Are you ready to accept the oath?
I am, Your Honor.
All right, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Dave Calley...
I, Dave Calley.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of trustee...
Of trustee.
Place... Place...
Place...
Four.
Four. Four.
Of Weatherford College...
Of Weatherford College.
Of the Parker County Junior College District...
The Parker County Junior College District.
State of Texas...
State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Constitution and laws of the United States...
Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state...
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You are sworn in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. We thank you.
Judge, thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you for having me here.
I brought the oaths here for the two trustees to sign. Looks like the place numbers are reversed, but...
We'll get back...
Parker wants you. Okay, and then we can change those.
Okay. And I want to say just a few words.
Yeah, that'll be fine. Thank you very much.
Very brave, very brave. We can take pictures first, though, if you'd like.
You can take as much time as you want, Mr. Calley.
The three of y'all together.
Okay. With or without the mask?
No masks.
Get out of the way.
All right, one, two, three. Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Calley.
I too want to thank you guys for this great opportunity. I would like to recognize Lisa Franklin with the Parker County Hospital District. She is the backbone of the district and the college and the district have just entered in to an agreement, which I believe will help the students a great deal, students, faculty, and staff here at the college. I'm doing this for a couple of reasons, but for two people whose friendship I loved. Don Allen, who served on this board, and of course Roger Gizard. And I won't get emotional here, but I spoke at both of their funerals. And I felt the tap of Roger Gizard on my shoulder just moments ago. Those are shoes that can't be filled. There's no way. All I can do is do the very best that I can with these ladies and gentlemen to do what's best for the students of this college, for the faculty, and for the staff, for the taxpayers of this county, and for those two guys. And I thoroughly appreciate this. It's an honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on into the 11th item on the agenda.
Got it.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you very much.